Good morning, everybody. I welcome you to today's emergency meeting on March 20th, Friday. I'd like to read to you some instructions in terms of how we're going to proceed with this meeting. In an effort to provide access to the public who may not be able to show up because of shelter-in-place order, we will be accepting emails to, please note, citicouncil@cityofwatsonville.org for this item from the start of the staff report to the end of the city council clarifying questions. Our council members will also be participating remotely. The council meeting is also being video streamed through our city website, as it usually is, and on Channel 70 or Channel 99. It will also be video streamed in English and in Spanish in Facebook. Since this is the first time we are conducting the meeting in such a manner, we ask that you please be patient since we may encounter technical difficulties, including some delays. Please be patient with us. Emails will be read once all the public in the audience has broken, and welcome to those of you who are in our audience. In addition, we will also be accepting comments via phone at area code 831-768-3527, again, And I want to repeat the email address, citicouncil@cityofwatsonville.org. Please be patient since we only have one line. If the line is busy, please call back. We ask that your emails include your name for accurate record in the minutes, also for people calling by, please announce your name for the record. And with that, we will start with roll call.
Present.
Hirsch.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Present.
We will continue now with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America.
The Senate.
You will move on now to presentation and oral communications. We will begin with communications from the public. If there's anybody here present that would like to address the city council on items not on the agenda, please come forward.
Steve Trujillo, Parro Village. A long time ago, there was a book written, Love in the Time of Cholera. I think I'm going to write a sequel, Civic Activism in the Time of Corona. This is a very unusual circumstance we find ourselves in. While I'm emotionally drained, I am physically never in better shape, even though I do have type 2 diabetes and I'm 67 years old. I would like to talk about the canceled, although not to my knowledge, cleanup of the Levy Walkway by Salsi Pues Creek, which I did single-handedly, and I let you all know about it. In an hour, my dog and I managed to go all the way from the curb that goes by Lakeview Drive all the way down to the bridge and pick up every single piece of trash in a bag with a glove. And that's just one person doing that. So I'm requesting that maybe we should do this more than once a year, perhaps, and spend a little money, maybe for one hour's work of someone who works for Recreation and Parks Department, to go out and do the same thing that an old man can do with only one eye and type 2 diabetes. The fact that we live in such a beautiful part of the world makes it mandatory that we take care of this beautiful part of the world, since apparently the city council seen fit to build ever more increasing drive-throughs that cause production of CO2 and junk food that kills us rather than nourishes us because there are no anti-toxins in any of that food. Maybe you could spare an hour, a month of Watsonville worker to go out and clean up along the levee, one of the most beautiful in the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that cleanup. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council on items not on the agenda? Cenan will now move to oral communications from the council, and I'll just go down the line and ask each council member if they wish to report. So we'll start with Councilmember Trina.
Trina, it's your turn to talk.
Councilmember Francisco. Oh, there's Trina.
Trina, can you unmute, and this is your time for public comment.
All right. Let's repeat that, right? Making sure everybody stays healthy, really comply to this. It's going to be really significant that we all work together with this. We also paved the path instead of going into the gas stations. I've heard that from some of the business owners that have gas stations. And, you know, again, we're all going through this together. We all have to work together as a team. So let's get through this together and be patient with each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Trina. Councilmember Francisco.
Paco, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo some of the same sentiments made by my colleague, Trina Kaufman Gomez. I think she's absolutely right. We're in this together. Only together will we come through this a lot stronger. So I just want to thank the community for doing their part. I want to thank our businesses, our nonprofits, everyone that's stepping up to the plate to really help out in this time of need. I want to thank the city manager, the staff, the county for doing their part. And yes, please, let's take care of each other. Let's not take risks, unnecessary risks especially. And yeah, just stay safe, practice healthy hygiene practices, and trust me, we will come out a lot stronger. So thank you, everyone, for doing your part, and thank you for those that are at the chambers or are following us online. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you, councilmember. We'll move on to Councilmember Aurelio.
Aurelio would like to hear from you.
Your community, we are going through some difficult times, and not just as a city, but as a nation and as a humanity. But as a city, we must continue to be strong and follow the directives that have been given for the well-being of everyone. This is really important that we follow what's been given out to us. We must stay and be respectful and thoughtful of others. We must make tough decisions and take actions so that as a community, we move forward, let's help keep our numbers down as much as we can with concerns to the virus, COVID-19, follow the new guidelines that have been put in place. I would like to thank all those that continue to do their jobs, from the farm worker to the businessman, for going beyond what is required. To our staff at the city, I personally send out a very big hug from six feet away, which includes all departments. To our healthcare providers who are on the front lines, may God bless you all for the dedication you have for the well-being of our community and beyond, public health. So be safe, everyone. As a community, we can move forward, and God bless us all.
Thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Felipe.
Felipe, it's your turn to speak.
Okay, am I on?
Yes.
Okay. Well, you know, I just want to urge the message and make sure that people follow the directive of the shelter-in-place directive that we have. And, you know, we've gone through the, we've gone through different crises in our community in the past. We've gone through, you know, the earthquake in '89, the floods of '95, and as a community, we always came together, and I urge everyone that, you know, that as a community, we stay strong and that we, again, stay safe and follow the shelter-in-place. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Lowell.
Lowell, it's your turn to speak.
Thank you very much. Am I on? Can everyone hear me? Well, welcome to my kitchen table. There's always been a lot of action happening at my table from years back, and we're going to have more action throughout the community's kitchen tables. This is a tough time for workers, a tough time for landlords as well, and rent payers and folks out on the street. It's probably not going to get any easier for a little while. What we need is some physical distance between each other to preserve the health and clear communications that we can follow, and I think the council members have said it all. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be moving on now to Councilmember Ari.
I'd like to thank everybody that I've seen from a distance and I've talked to about how important it is to follow the shelter-in-place orders. And I also appreciate people walking six feet or more away when they pass with their dogs and they're out walking and getting exercise, which I think is extremely important. So here, I'd like to also let you know, there's so many angels out there and wonderful people who are working, not only all of our city workers who are keeping things moving, and our police and our fire, but people like, you know, DeeDee Vargas and Barbie Gomez, who, you know, I think they delivered over 420 care packages to the elderly in the past couple days, and about 75 to the homeless. Just amazing, and a wonderful part of our community, a wonderful part of our community and greatly appreciated by everyone. I want to thank everyone for doing their part because it is about our community. If we can continue to support each other by doing what our city and our county and our state and our federal governments are letting us know what to do, then I think we're going to get through this together. I know as a school teacher, we're setting up our online learning, and the kids are at home and they're engaged and excited, getting their Chromebooks today and tomorrow. So thank you also to the Parro Valley Unified School District, and especially to our school board president, Danny Dodge, who has done an extraordinary job moving this forward. So thank you, everyone, and I look forward to hearing public comments.
I want to underline what all my fellow council members shared in terms of making sure that we all take responsibility to have a healthy community. I was able to attend one meeting before the shelter-in-place order came out. On the evening after the city council meeting last week, I had the opportunity to give waste reduction certificates to several individuals from the Parro Valley Unified School District. The city has a partnership with the district where they support the city's program of recycling and food scrap separation. Many individuals, both students and adults, work to make this partnership happen. After the certificates, two staff members gave a presentation on what several schools do to work with the city. I was pleased that the city has developed such a strong partnership with the district on this state mandated requirement. And that concludes my report. We will be moving on now to reports to council.
Mayor, we have a phone call. We have a phone call for oral communications.
Oh, oral communications? Okay. For agenda, for items not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda.
Yes, go for it.
Hello, you're on.
Hi, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This is Marty Alena from the Community Action Board of Santa Cruz County, and I'm with Bas Navia, our housing director, and Helen Uensory, our assistant director. And we just wanted to make a public comment, number one, to thank you and the extraordinary city staff for doing all what you're doing to keep our city moving forward, and also to share just general information about the community action board. We are open, however, all our appointments are by phone only. We continue to provide essential services and rental assistance and employment services, services for our youth, for our seniors, our immigration services. We continue to offer census online support and campaigns to make sure that people are responding to the census, that have questions answered around the census. And so we just want to make sure to not forget the importance of census in this time. We also are continuing to do job matches by phone for the day workers in our community, and we ask that if there are projects that can be done outside, supporting social distancing protocols and safety protocols, that we are here to provide job matches to help continue to support a community that is vulnerable and needing to continue to work, to support their families. We are doing increased food distribution for all Cav clients in any of our programs, and we have sites at the Day Worker Center and in Davenport to distribute food. Our homeless programs are distributing food and supporting other local efforts for food distribution in the city of Watsonville. And we continue to offer emergency payment programs for referrals from the county for people needing emergency services. We are focusing on advocating for no barrier rental assistance for families who do not qualify under normal rental assistance eligibility requirements, and we're advocating for resources to help get emergency supplies as needed by families. And I just want to say again, to express my gratitude to the city council, to the staff, and to all the folks who are still moving us forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty, and thank you to Cav for all the services you provide our community. I understand there's an email also?
Yes.
This email comes from Daniel Dodge Jr. He says, "Hi, good morning, everyone. Thank you, City Council and Mayor Garcia, for calling this meeting to discuss this important issue in our community. As board president of PBUSD, I would like to see an ad hoc committee to deal directly with the federal government, the coronavirus, and how it affects PBUSD. As you know, PBUSD is a little one district receiving federal money. I would like to work with the National League of Cities as well as a liaison from the National School Board Association to deal directly with the federal government. Thank you very much."
Thank you, Daniel, for those suggestions.
We have another call.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, you're on. Hello?
Hello?
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Nancy Bilisic. I just wanted to let you know that I have been attending, I attended the Zone 7 flood meeting, and the meeting was, I just want you to know that we are continuing to work on the levee project even with all of this going on. So it's not, no one has stopped working, and there are communication with Congressman Panetta, Zach Friend, Greg Capit. People are still very concerned about the levee. So I want residents to know that we have not just forgotten the project.
Thank you, Nancy. And we have another.
I also want to thank those members who have attended the Adult Education WASP visit on Sunday, March, I think it was 8. Greatly appreciate your attendance.
You're welcome. We have another email.
Dear Council, thank you, City Council and Mayor Garcia, for calling this important meeting during this time of crisis. Thank you to all the PBUSD staff that are keeping our district running and feeding our community. I have spoken to our PBUSD board president, Daniel Dodge. I support him in creating an ad hoc committee for communication directly to the federal government. I think it is important to work in conjunction with the city of Watsonville and its partnership with the National League of Cities and the National School Board Association. PBUSD is Title I school receiving funds, many federal funds. We need to stay in direct communication in order to serve our community. Thank you, Jennifer Schacher, PBUSD Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Jennifer. Hearing no other communications, we'll move forward to reports to the council. The first one is by our city manager on the COVID-19 essential service update.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council and community that are joining us via livestream and Facebook Live this morning. With the COVID-19 pandemic continuing to change rapidly and impacting our lives and community in significant ways, we wanted to spend some time this morning to provide a brief update on the COVID-19 pandemic and the city's preventative measures to respond to what has become a global health crisis. This is information that was provided to us by the county health officer at a briefing on March 9th that I thought would be helpful for both the council and the community to see, acknowledging that there's a lot of information out there about the virus and what it means. We wanted to provide some facts for the community's benefit. So what is COVID-19? It's an outbreak of respiratory disease caused by a novel, new coronavirus. Coronaviruses are a large family of viruses that are common in people and many different species of animals, including camels, cattle, cats, and bats. The disease was first detected in China and has now been detected in more than 100 locations internationally, including the United States. I thought the side-by-side comparison would also be helpful. There's been a lot of information in the media about how COVID-19 differs from the common flu. It does differ in several important ways that I wanted to highlight for the council and the community. First, the common flu's mortality rate is at 0.1% as compared with COVID-19's mortality rate of 2% to 3%. Unlike the flu, COVID-19 has no treatment available, no vaccine available to date, although one is being worked on, no immunity, and pending transmission routes. I also wanted to share a map that was created by Johns Hopkins University that provides live updates on confirmed COVID cases throughout the globe. One of the stark numbers on this map is that the U.S., and when we held this briefing back on March 9th, the U.S. total confirmed cases was a little over 600. By contrast, today, you can see on the map that it is now at 14,000 over the course of the last 11 days, and we continue to see those numbers increase rapidly throughout the United States. So again, this has been a rapidly changing situation as cities and counties and school districts race to implement preventative measures to protect the health and safety of our community. In many respects, it has been local governments and communities leading the charge across the country in responding to this pandemic. And the city of Watsonville has been busy doing the same. As local confirmed cases began to increase in Santa Cruz County, the city council moved quickly to declare a public health emergency on March 11th. That was followed by proactive efforts to begin rolling out a new continuity of operations model aimed at reducing public exposure to the community and our employees with the closure of rec programs, libraries, suspending all meetings of 50 or more, consistent with CDC guidelines at the time, and that was implemented on March 12th. Also on March 12th, the county office of education announced school closures until March 20th. That was followed by a decision that we made to also move forward. We were one of the first cities in the county to make the decision of closing all non-essential services and focusing our efforts on essential operations for the community. On March 17th, county health officials issued a stay-in-place order until April 7th. And just last night, again, underscoring how rapidly the situation has been moving, California governor issued a stay-in-place order, expanding that shelter-in-place order to the entire state of California until further notice. But I wanted to be very clear to the community that your city remains open for business. We continue to offer a number of essential services to the community, and our employees have stepped up in a big way to provide those services. Wanted to spend some time running through what those are and what staff we have that are continuing to come into work on a daily basis to serve our community. While most city facilities are closed to the public, members of the public may still access and contact city services remotely. City administrative offices remain operational. Our police and fire departments also remain fully operational and staffed. Our community development department, including permits, plan checks, code enforcement, plan review services, are all also available by appointment, and I'm sharing the contact information up here on the screen. Many of our public works department's employees are also reporting to work on a daily basis. That includes engineering and transportation. We're continuing to move active construction projects forward, Public Works Customer Service Center, all of our utility services. We're maintaining online bill pay to make sure that we remain accessible to our community members, and they could do so by paying bills online or over the phone. And our public drop-off at our municipal services center is also available for the first half of the day, 9 to 12, for folks that want to utilize those services. And of course, our airport is a 24/7 operation, so we have continued to remain open and providing limited services to those that may need access to our airport during this time. Our Watsonville Main Library and Freedom Library, while the physical spaces are closed, we have been making a major push to have as many resources available online to our community as possible. That includes eBooks, e-autobooks, streaming videos, magazines, newspapers are all accessible to our community on a 24/7 basis. Our Parks and Community Services Department has also been rolling out a number of innovative and creative ways to help stay connected with our community, and those include and creative ways to help stay connected with our community, and those include an online rec center where members of the community can go to access online resources for youth all the way up to adult ages. Obviously, during this time, a number of our physical community centers have been closed out of protection for the community. That includes the Watsonville Senior Center. Classes, events, programs, and facility rentals have been canceled and postponed until further notice. Parks and Fields remain open at this time. However, if you visit a park, please continue to practice good hygiene and social distancing. We encourage folks to get out and continue to take care of themselves and recreate, but to do so within all of the social distancing guidelines. And Parks and Recreation Virtual Center is available. It's at watsonvillerec.com with a lot of great online resources to help keep your kiddos busy that may be stuck in the house and starting to have cabin fever. And police reports that are not urgent can be made online. That's available on our police department website. And unfortunately, with the shelter-in-place order, we have started rolling out a number of large community event cancellations that we wanted to highlight. Those include some of our routine meetings like the Mello JPA, as well as some of our commission meetings from Parks and Rec, the Planning Commission, to some of our larger events that are coming up, including the Cinco de Mayo event. Acknowledging that this is an incredibly unsettling and stressful time for our community, we know that we have a responsibility to get as much information out as possible in as many forms as possible to help our residents and businesses make informed decisions to protect their health and the health of others, and as we work collectively to slow the spread of the disease. You can see on here a number of examples of how we've been accomplishing that. We've been working with the county CAO's office and other municipalities in the county. In fact, I think we've been working in a more coordinated fashion than perhaps we ever have before. We are in constant contact with one another throughout the day, and we have weekly calls set up as well. We have been pushing out a lot of information across social media through both our city and police Facebook accounts. That includes bilingual videos as we continue to keep the community updated on this rapidly changing situation. We acknowledge that not everyone is reading the materials that are being pushed out. We want to make sure that we make that information as accessible as possible. We've also maintained contact with our community partners, and we're working with a number of our nonprofit organizations and partners in the community who have large networks of high trust in Watsonville to also help get information out. And today, as another example, we are providing this meeting through Facebook Live for the first time in both English and Spanish. There are also a number of resources we want to make sure the community knows is available. Just yesterday, the County Department of Health started a new call center. And this call center is available to any resident or business that may have a question about what steps they can take to keep themselves or their family safe and healthy, to what the shelter-in-place order means for some of our businesses here in town. We've had a lot of questions about what businesses qualifies as an essential business or what businesses should consider closing their doors. The call center is available to help answer those questions, and I would encourage anyone to reach out if they do have questions on any of those topics. We also have a number of materials on our city website, and the county's website also has a page dedicated to a number of materials as we all try to keep up with the high volume of information that's coming down from both the state and the federal government on the coronavirus response efforts. And please continue to follow all of our social media feeds, both on the city and police department, on both Facebook and Instagram. We will continue to do our best to get information out in a timely manner so that you all know what's happening and are armed with the right information. So the outlook. Again, the city remains open for business at this point in time, and I just received this update from the county public health officer this morning. There are 14 confirmed cases in Santa Cruz County with an expectation that there will be more. However, our hospitals and our 911 response capacity are at normal levels at the moment. However, we are continuing to make preparations as we expect these numbers to increase. We continue to provide essential services critical for the health and well-being of our community. You can access those services in a number of ways. We are committed to proactively communicating with our community during this rapidly changing situation. And I think it's really important to note that this is a national crisis affecting all segments of our community. Unlike other disasters we have faced, this event is impacting all segments of society, regardless of age, ethnicity, economic background, and businesses, big and small. We must continue to work closely with one another as a community and with our local, state, federal partners to identify relief measures as we all work together to get through this. Safety and well-being of our community is our most important goal. And as a community, we are responding to this crisis. We are resilient, and we will weather this storm if we come together as a community and we take this crisis seriously. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you for that report. For council members, are there any technical or clarifying questions you might have? 30-second delay, so they will be on soon. Okay, Councilmember Hernandez, you had some questions?
Hello? Okay, so I wanted to find out if any of the businesses or residential folks want to reach out to the city about this issue, who would they contact? If there's a business, for example, that has been shut down because they're nonessential business, how would they go about resolving eviction or something like that? Who would they contact?
So we provided information to the Santa Cruz County Call Center. We're encouraging any questions regarding the virus, response efforts, and how the shelter-in-place order applies to businesses to contact that hotline directly. They have the most relevant, up-to-date information to help guide those conversations as well. I will also just note that we are putting a concerted effort into educating our business community. Over the next couple of days and next week, our police department, with help from our other city employees, will be proactively reaching out to our businesses, helping to educate them about what the order means for them and working on voluntary compliance. Obviously, there's a lot of questions and some ambiguity in the order about how it applies and what businesses are defined as essential businesses or nonessential businesses. So we are trying to get as much clarity out on that topic as we can. And I know that many of the questions that are coming into the county's call center are from businesses seeking clarity about what steps they need to take.
Felipe, does that answer your question?
Does that answer your question, Felipe?
Okay, Councilmember Estrada? Francisco?
Paco, you're on.
Tamara, first off, I wasn't able to hear the answer for the last question. I had no audio. And my question was just simply, what can we do as a community to make people understand, people that aren't taking the shelter-in-place seriously, to how important it is that they sort of stop with the nonessential activities that are supposed to be done by other people?
Okay. An answer?
No.
So I think it's incredibly important that the community understand that this is an incredibly serious crisis, we're continuing to see numbers increasingly increase. And it's only when, it's only when our community follows the guidelines that were sent in place by the order that we will start seeing the increasing numbers of this virus start to dissipate. So we are continuing to put that information out via social media and through direct contact with our families and residents. But I would encourage the council to help with getting that word out as well. It's important that people follow the social distancing directions and that unless they're accessing essential services, that they follow those directions to stay home, to both protect themselves, their families, but also their fellow community members.
Because of the delays that occur, I'm going to be looking to Erin to help me decide how to call on the next person.
I will be setting approximately 30-second timer, which will indicate approximately when they're receiving Matt's answer. And then we can call on the next person, preferably if we could let them get all of their questions out, and then we can move on to the next person. That would be ideal.
And the next person is whom, Tamara? Are there any other council members that would like to ask technical or clarifying questions of Matt on his report?
Mayor and council, I also want to acknowledge that we have Dory Rose.
We are.
We have Dory Rose Inda, CEO, with Salud para la Gente here in attendance as well. They're also on the forefront of helping to get educational information out to the community. And she may have some information to share as well.
Councilmember Adadio, did you want to ask a question?
Adadio, would you like to ask a question?
No, let's continue moving this meeting forward. I'm having audio problems with the livestream. I'm watching you guys, but I can't hear you anymore. The audio went off on it.
I can hear you, Adadio.
Yeah, on my laptop, I have audio, but on the livestream on my big laptop, I don't have nothing. I can see them, though.
Okay, this is time for public input? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm seeing if this is the speaking time?
Yes, yes, it is.
Good morning. My name is Dory Rose Inda. I'm the CEO of Salud para la Gente, the community health center here in Watsonville. And I want to just start by saying thank you to city leadership, city council members for your comments this morning, and to staff. We know very well what it has taken to respond immediately to the new directions and instructions and changing all of the business practices for the city and for staff, and we thank you for your partnership. We also are in incredibly great partnership with county public health leadership, all of the healthcare entities in the county here locally, and with the school district, the county office of education. All of our public services are working incredibly hard, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to be able to respond immediately to keep our community safe. I want to talk a little bit about shelter-in-place first and the question that Councilmember Estrada brought up about social distancing. So shelter-in-place is the best strategy to do a couple of things. One, it is to keep our families and individuals and residents safe so that they are not exposed to COVID-19, and it is to keep the rest of the community safe in case someone has been exposed, so they are not out in the community spreading the illness to others. It is incredibly important that we all follow the social distancing instructions, and also incredibly challenging. And so I don't want to make it sound like it's simple. What we're trying to do is called flattening the curve. And if you look on the public health website, you'll see images that show you that if, without taking these really clear directions of mitigation and the shelter-in-place order seriously, what you see is a very steep peak of spreading COVID-19. When these mitigation or these actions are followed around shelter-in-place, people staying in home, staying separate from all the activities they do outside of their home, you see that immediate peak really flatten. That's what we're trying to do together. We're trying to flatten that curve. I'm going to keep talking for a while.
No, please, please keep talking.
Flattening the curve means that we're doing a lot of work right now, we're making a lot of changes, and it's not necessarily a short term, because flattening the curve actually takes a little more time. So yes, this is a crisis, and this is an emergency, but responding with a crisis attitude isn't actually helpful. In fact, responding with calm, understanding that even though it's different, it's very, I've never experienced anything in my lifetime, this is new, and I think to most of us and back to all of us, that's probably true. However, the directions are clear and relatively simple. These are strategies that we can do together, each and every one of us, and doing it with calm is the best way, because actually, it's very effective. It's effective to be doing and following the shelter-in-place. I went this morning, Salud para la Gente is open. We're open every single day now. We encourage people to call us before they come in, both for their own safety and to be able to help manage their care, but we are open. And when I say every day, I mean Sundays as well. We're open seven days a week. Our healthcare partners are all hands on deck, and like city staff, the healthcare staff, it's a team of heroes. Everyone, as I mentioned, is really taking very seriously that they are here to keep everybody safe. This morning, I went to our food distribution in partnership with Second Harvest. Food distribution is essential right now. Making sure that people can follow the shelter-in-place means to make sure that people have food. There was about 40 people, the majority, who were, let's just say, grandparents. We keep them standing six feet apart. In talking with them this morning, it became very clear what it means in this community to exercise shelter-in-place. It is one thing to tell people, keep six feet distance, wear a mask. If you have someone who's vulnerable or someone who's been exposed, keep them in a room, let them isolate. But in actuality, in a household where there are many people, maybe in one room, several families, maybe in a couple of rooms, those instructions aren't relevant. And so we really need to support the fact that our families need to think about how to socially distance themselves in a way that works for them and their households. That means, most importantly, that we actually try to not have physical contact as much as possible. So that's not an easy thing to tell a grandparent who lives with their grandchildren, but it is one of the ways in which we can protect our grandparents and our most vulnerable and our most vulnerable. And that's one of the key things about COVID-19. It's very contagious, but those who are most at risk are the elder and those who have underlying health conditions. And so it takes each of us in our families and each of us in our community to make sure that we are helping them stay safe. And that does mean helping grandparents not hug their grandchildren. That's not a simple thing to do. I've had the conversation with my own parents. I have a father who's 95, an aunt who's 96. I am keeping six feet distance. I am not hugging them. They're not crazy about that. But it is what we need to do and to instruct our children as well to help them help their grandparents. Really, what's essential to understand about shelter in place is that any person who's unable to meet the request of how to stay isolated is not just a risk for themselves, but it's a risk for everyone. And so we are, as public service, really tasked with leading by example. Leading by example by how we are interacting with the community, all the efforts, for instance, the city has done to make make services available to people from their homes, which really, you know, I wish we could use a different language than social isolation or social distancing because really we have physical distancing and physical isolation, but we want social interaction. We want people to stay connected and engaged. In order to lead by example, it also means we make decisions that we have to clearly think through and explain to the community so they understand why we're making decisions that affect people. And today is one very important day for the city council to make a decision that is leading by example. You will be discussing the moratorium on eviction. And we are asking from a public health lens, for the reasons I've already given, that there be no barriers for our community members to be able to respond and comply with shelter in place. If people run the risk of having to leave their homes and not having a home to be in, to isolate in, they will not be able to comply. They will put themselves at risk, everyone else in the community, including the landlord, at risk. And it takes everyone to make sure that that doesn't happen. This is a really unique circumstance in which it doesn't matter who you are, where you work, what you do. We are all equally responsible and equally important in making sure that we can flatten the curve. Today, I'm going to ask the city council to please consider when you review the proposal on the eviction moratorium, that you make sure there are no barriers, that if documentation is required, it will create a barrier in this community to be able to stay in their homes. And I would ask that you follow the recommendations that have been submitted by the Watsonville Law Center this morning. And I'm also very happy to answer any questions about healthcare provision or the ability to access care during this time.
Thank you so much, Dory. We so much appreciate all of that saludas for our community and look forward to continue to working with you. And when the item comes up, please do not hesitate to come up and share.
I was confused. I gave my presentation.
Okay, okay. And thank you for cleaning. Okay, is there anybody else from the public that would like to address us on the consent? Excuse me, on this public input?
Yes, I would. If any of you bothered to watch CNN last night at 7 o'clock, there was an hour devoted to this very topic. They cited that South Korea is doing the right thing. They are identifying and making sure that they test those who are suffering symptoms and then quarantining them. Unfortunately, they didn't do that in Italy. They just quarantined everybody and they now have more than 3,400 deaths, the most of any nation in the world. Not a good model, not a good model. South Korea is a much better model. We need to basically close down at least two or three drive-through restaurants and turn them into drive-through testing centers. I'd like to suggest one, Pollo Loco, which doesn't even serve food that's edible. In addition to that, we need to look at the question about inequality in terms of farmers' markets. The one at Cabrillo is reopening tomorrow. Filled with wide upper-middle-class people with lots of money and driving their Teslas into the parking lot and being able to shop. Oh my, look what they have. They have arugula on sale. Well, while our market is closed, that makes no sense at all. And I'm charging environmental health racism because if that one needs to be open in Cabrillo, then the one here in Watsonville needs to be open as well or shut them both down. That is outrageous. In addition to all this, in addition to all this, you have to understand that the city of Watsonville has to set an example because we are an 80, more than 80% Latino populated community. And what's good for Aptos should be good for here. In addition to that, we need testing and the fact that you're now not on the phone, calling the governor and demanding we get testing facilities and calling Vice President Pincus off, getting my testing facilities. I have no idea why you're not doing that. I'd be happy to volunteer to do that myself. In the meantime, I am in Paharo Village, doing my best to assist neighbors who can't go out and go get groceries because I can and I will, and get gas and get whatever else I need, including the bank. If I have to go there and borrow out more money on my own, which I will do because I am a good resident of the city of Watsonville.
Thank you for your comments. Is there, do we have any phone calls or emails on this? Okay, oh, please come on up.
Good morning. I'd just like to thank you guys for bringing this meeting and kind of giving a little clear explanation of what's going on because a lot of people are taking advantage of what is going on and actually bringing fake news and everything. And, you know, especially on social media, which is the most used at this moment. Just people bring fake news and nobody knows what to believe. And that is the reason why I'm here. This is actually my first time here, but I really wanted to get informed. So I think all of you guys who are actually working hard to get this, then we can proceed to the steps about what the sir is saying of getting tested and all that. I think it was more important to get a meeting first and explain to everybody what's going on and all the information. There's a little things that I just had in mind that I wanted to bring out. One of them, since you guys are, you know, the top of the city in some certain words, I think it would be great, just like you guys were using the videos and social media, to bring examples of how social distancing, like the lady was saying, and other things, other rules that we have to follow. I think you guys would be the best example. I don't know, bringing up a video, coming together, doing different videos and putting it together and putting it on social media. That would bring more people because a lot of people are actually not taking it serious. And I saw on the city, I continue to see a lot of people out in the streets with no six feet distance or anything like that. I think you guys should take a little step further with that and prove to them that it's actually something serious. And I'll always keep in mind that you guys have an audience of all ages, so people will understand a certain way and other people understand differently. So that was just another comment. I also want to bring, you know, a suggestion. Maybe it would be also great to persuade other stores, especially the local ones, to give priority to the elders because they are the ones who are, you know, at higher risk of getting, you know, sick with this virus. So it would be great because I see a couple of stores, I believe Target, Costco, and some of them are only for like an hour or something like that. And I honestly feel like it should be that as long as they're open, the elders should take priority on anything that they need. And also information about the phone numbers where people can actually call and explain about people who are taking advantage. Like I was saying, I recently went inside a store and they had a six pack of water for $6. That is way too much money. All this information, I've been trying to look it up. And like I said, people are giving fake news everywhere and I don't know where to look for it. So those are just some suggestions that I wanted to bring out.
Thank you so much. Please say your name.
My name is Angel.
Angel, thank you for your suggestions and comments.
Thank you, guys.
Do we have either phone calls or emails? No?
I have several emails.
Okay.
Diana Fernandez sends, soy maestra de edades pequeñas. Quiero decirles algunas cosas que he observado. Sé que el banco de comida está haciendo muchos esfuerzos, pero yo tuve la oportunidad de ir a recibir comida. Y nos dijeron que si hiciéramos fila y las personas no estaban respetando la distancia que se nos pidió, estuvimos como una hora en la fila. Pienso que sería buena idea que el banco de comida tome otras medidas. Por ejemplo, que la comida se recoja en los carros sin tener que hacer filas. Y las personas que van caminando que se les insistiendo que tomen su distancia, pero solo se les dice una vez. También hoy en la mañana fui por un lonche para mi hijo de cuatro años a la escuela Rolling Hills. Y observé que había muchas personas con niños juntas sin tomar sus distancias. Y nadie les decía nada. Si estaban dando papeles, información, pero no lo estaban poniendo en práctica. I'm going to translate that. You don't have to worry about it. Hi, my name is Diana Fernandez. I am a teacher for young children. I want to tell you that I, some things that I have observed. And I went to the food bank. I know they're doing great efforts to provide people with food. But they told us to make a line and the people that were in line were not respecting the distance in between people. And we stood in line for about an hour. I think it will be a great idea for the food bank to consider other measures. For example, that people can pick up food from their cars without having to make a line outside their carts. And that people that are going walking, that just remind them that they need to keep their distance, but just one time. They also, today I also went to pick up my lunch for my kid, four-year-old at Rolling Hills School. And I observed many people with their kids that were together without taking, keeping their distance. And no one was telling them anything. They were giving them papers with information, but they were not putting it in practice. Gracias por sus comentarios. Manuel González, gracias por tomar el tiempo de por esta junta tan importante. ¿Qué está haciendo la ciudad para que la comunidad tome esto en serio? Sigo viendo muchos niños en la calle y en el parque de patinetas. El propósito de que los niños no fueran a la escuela era para que se cuidaran, no para que estuvieran en la calle. Gracias, Manuel González. Gracias por sus comentarios. I'm going to translate, mayor. Manuel González, thank you for taking the time of having this very important meeting. What is the city doing so that the community takes this seriously? I keep seeing many kids in the streets and in the park, in the skate park. The purpose of this, the kids not going to school, is to take care of themselves and not to be out on the streets. Thank you, Manuel González.
Okay.
Two more.
Oh, two more, okay.
To whom we may concern? I am very concerned over the lack of precautions that many people are taking here in the city of Watsonville. I purchased groceries at Target last week and I was surprised to see how many families and children that were there at Target. This shelter in place is not vacation. I think many people do not yet understand that my own father does not believe in the harm the virus can do to us despite our diligence in trying to convince him to take precautions. On another note, I am also concerned about the people who are still in the workforce. Many of my family members are blessed to still have their jobs because this means that we still have a source of income coming in. However, they are still getting exposure to the virus by going to work every day because they are still interacting with thousands of people each day. My husband is a merchandiser at a store and he has been seeing all the chaos in our community. Not only is he exposing himself, but he's also exposing our family. My five-year-old with asthma, is there anything that we can do to lower and decrease their exposures to the virus? Such as give them gloves, hand sanitizers, face masks, et cetera? If not, all the people who continue to work deserve to be earning overtime or higher pay rate for their courage of continuing to provide for our community. Warm regards, Jennifer Ortiz.
One more.
From Emily Gutierrez, hello, city of Watsonville. I would like to know what actions have you taken or would you take to protect the small business owners? What are you doing about homeless populations? Are you ensuring that they are protected and have the resources like food and care? Emily Gutierrez.
That concludes the emails. Is there a phone call? No phone calls then? Okay. Thank you for all of those that communicated with us. We will move on now to our consent agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to come forward on our consent agenda and we have four items. Is there anybody that would like to address our consent agenda? See none. I will bring it. Oh, yes, we have an email.
I just want to make sure, council. No, you're asking council too for consent agenda?
Well, I was just going to ask that I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
A motion for consent agenda?
And Gonzalez made the second. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? No discussion, then I will ask for roll call, except.
I will do it.
So at the bottom, will you do a roll call?
I will do a roll call.
Hers?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Gonzalez.
Correct.
Parker?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Estrada?
Yes.
Kaufman Gomez?
Kaufman Gomez? More voting on consent agenda, Kaufman Gomez?
Okay, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
And then Garcia? Yes, motion passes. There were no items removed from the consent agenda. This is the time now for a public hearing. Consideration of uncodified urgency ordinance enacting a temporary moratorium on evictions due to non-payment of residential and commercial rent for tenants where the failure to pay rents results from income loss resulting from the novel coronavirus COVID-19. We will begin with a staff report.
Thank you, mayor. Let me get the ticker here and I'll be ready to go.
Great, okay, can everybody hear me? Mic is on. So first of all, I want to do a brief background. I'm not going to repeat. Thank you to the city manager and all the comments from Dory and others regarding the current status. But I will just briefly summarize what we're talking about and there's a proposed moratorium deferring, not eliminating, but deferring evictions and deferring payment of rent, subject to proof during the council declared emergency to the extent those deferrals were caused by COVID-19. That's the public policy decision the council has before it. Now, the council has some alternatives this morning. They can adopt the staff version of the proposed urgency ordinance. They can make a motion to amend the staff approved version and if approved, adopt an amended version. They can vote on it. If the motion fails, it's not adopted. The council can table the motion, in which case it would end on today and could be brought back in the future. Bring it back in the future. Or they could make a motion to continue to a date certain. First of all, I'm gonna go through each of the public policy issues, one by one, and they're summarized in the report and indexed in a table that affects each of the issues. The first one is the duration. Okay, so let me just shout into it a little bit, maybe that'll help. We have the first issue, is the duration of the moratorium and we have a variety of alternatives from around the state that we brought to you. The one recommended was continue the ordinance in effect until the council terminates its existing March 10 proclamation. Another alternative is to keep it in effect for 30 days, 60 days, 120 days. Another alternative is during the duration of the urgency, the emergency by the state and another one is until a date certain, for example, May 31st. So they have, and there may be others, but those are the variables. The second public policy decision for the council is what property would affect. Residential? Commercial? Or both residential and commercial? Cities across the state do it. Any one of those three ways. Any one of those three ways is permissible. It's a decision for the council to make. The next issue is the proof of qualification, something that Dory talked about a little bit. We're recommending a specified alternatives list or the equivalent. We don't know what it might be, it could be almost anything. It depends on the circumstances. Some person may have a paycheck. Some person may have a bank account where they put the money. Some may have a letter from somebody employs them. It's hard to say what might be out there, but anything that is reasonably equivalent. Some cities have a explicit list of things. We don't think that's a good idea and some don't state what they are, which we also don't think is a good idea. This gives some direction. The next table is the rent repayment. We need to remember, this is not an abolishment of rent. It's a deferral of rent and a deferral of eviction. And we propose six months, up to six months after the moratorium expires. Other cities do 120 days. Some say they'll determine that in the future. San Jose did it that way. Others say until the expiration of the emergency or based on what the governor did last night, it could be until expiration of his stay in place order. Other considerations are the utilities. We're not addressing that in this ordinance. It can be done administratively and is being done administratively, as I understand it. Not necessary to be put in this ordinance. This is a legislative decision of the council. This is not, as I often say, an adjudicative decision. You don't have findings you have to make. You're a pure public policy legislative decision for the council to make. This is an emergency, excuse me, an urgency ordinance. Five votes of the council are required to pass it. That's pursuant to the charter. Summarizing the ordinance, no eviction upon demonstration of inability to pay rent caused by, one, caring for a household member, two, a layoff or other income reduction, three, complying with a quarantine order, or childcare, five, caring for a severely ill family member. Tenant requirements are to notify the landlord, document the covered reasons somehow, pay what they can despite the emergency and defer what they cannot pay and repay it all within six months of the termination or expiration. Council alternatives can adopt, as I said before, you can adopt the version that's proposed as it is. Somebody can make a motion to amend the staff version and if the motion to amend is approved, adopt an amended motion. Motion could fail when there be no adoption and no action this evening, this morning. It could be a motion to table and there could be a motion to continue this until a meeting.
Mr. City Attorney, I'm gonna urge you to get a little bit closer to the mic again.
I, I feel like I'm mouthing the mic. Should I start over with the alternatives? Okay, so the last alternative is a motion to continue to a date certain. And that ends my report. I'm happy to answer questions.
So this is a time for city council to ask clarifying and technical questions. Do we have any from our city council members?
Council question, can you please use the chat option to allow me to see who wants to speak?
Okay, council member Ari, please ask your question.
Ari, you're on.
Thank you. You can all hear me? I have a question for Alan. If you go back a screen or two regarding what has to be done for notification if you want to take part in this and you can't pay? What, I didn't, you were summarizing them, notify your landlord, document it? Could you review that, please?
Yes. The ordinance provides, you can notify the landlord in writing before rent is due that the tenant has a covered reason for delayed payment. For purposes of the order, in writing includes email or text communications to a landlord or the landlord's representative with whom the tenant has previously corresponded by email or text. We can't hear.
Okay, I'm gonna. Give a moment to the video.
I can't hear the response though. Okay, I'm not sure, the mic seems to be working. Maybe it's the phone is not working. Okay, so this is in the ordinance. It's in the second set of lettered subsections. A, notify the landlord in writing before rent is due that the tenant has a covered reason for delayed payment. For purposes of this order, in writing includes email or text communications to a landlord or the landlord's representative with whom the tenant has previously corresponded by email or text.
Thank you.
Okay, councilman Francisco.
Paco, you're on. Thank you, mayor. Will our mobile parks home, will they be included in all this? Or do we have to add something separately to make sure that they're included in the ordinance?
I would say they're included.
Okay. Will landlords be required to explain? Or who would explain to the tenants the rights that they will have under the ordinance?
This will be like any other ordinance the city staff would communicate it. My guess, if it was a mobile home, it would go to a homeowners association, for example. This is also allowed to be an affirmative defense in an unlawful detainer action. So if a landlord, despite the ordinance, began to enforce under the, for non-payment under the unlawful detainer, this could be an affirmative defense, like a lot of other affirmative defenses. For example, the just cause provisions in the recent law that was, went into effect January 1st. This could be an affirmative defense there. I have not discussed the city manager, for example, bailing this to a tenant association or anything of that nature.
Okay. And my understanding of the ordinance is that it was born out of the executive order by the governor, which is to protect the public safety, is that correct?
Are you asking about this ordinance or you're asking about the governor's order?
The governor's.
The governor's order was based on public safety, is my understanding.
And could you explain to the public maybe the consequences of that eviction should bring about in the community?
Well, people are evicted and they're evicted because they can't pay. They end up unprotected. That exacerbates disease spreading, inability to protect themselves and all the other things that homelessness results from.
Okay, if you had already addressed this, I apologize. Sometimes I get audio, sometimes I don't, but thank you for answering the question, mayor.
Thank you. Council member Aurelio.
Aurelio, you're on. Aurelio. Aurelio, you're next.
Okay, Felipe has a question. It appears that council member is unable to hear us. We'll continue with council manager. We're having double, so how are we gonna fix that?
You guys got me?
Aurelio, you're next.
I know, I know, I'm speaking.
Okay, go Aurelio. Felipe has a question.
Hello?
Yes, Aurelio, please continue.
I can hear you.
Yes, please speak.
Mayor, if I may. The reason that they're having conflicting audio issues is because they're live streaming, that stream is delayed. So when our city attorney finishes his sentence, it's about 37 seconds after that they get that. Same thing goes for their questions and responses to each other. When they speak, they could very well be listening to each other during the phone call, but it's likely that they're waiting for the video stream to come through.
I can hear you.
Just recently we heard them overlapping and that's because they're probably going through some of that. So we can try and do a better job of, you know, kind of organizing them and their thoughts or we can start taking those 37-second breaks, whatever is most convenient for you. We simply relay that message across the board.
Well, what I just want to do is, we have first council member Aurelio, then councilman Felipe. So can we just start with councilman Aurelio now?
They could very well be listening to each other during the phone call, but it's likely that they're waiting for the video stream to come through.
I can hear you.
Just recently we heard them overlapping and that's because they're probably going through some of that.
Aurelio? Aurelio, this is your time to ask questions. Unmute your computer first.
Okay, okay, I know this is the delay. You guys got me now?
Yes, we got you now. Aurelio? Aurelio, this is your time to ask questions.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that. Okay, okay, I'm on my laptop. Can you hear me?
No way, this is happening.
My question to the lawyer was.
Yes, you got you now.
Okay. My question to the lawyer. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that. Okay, okay.
I know what you're doing.
My question to the lawyer.
At this point, we're going to take a break for five minutes because we are having a lot of technical difficulties that we need to address. We have to go to Plan B now. We have to go to Plan B now. It took more than five minutes, but I think we now have the problem resolved. Before I go to the council members, Attorney Smith wanted to finish some comments that he began.
Thank you, Mayor. Both of these devices? Okay, so I wanted to elaborate a little bit more on a response to Councilmember Estrada's question about the homelessness issue. And I think the public policy component of this is that, as Dory talked about, the public policy is to flatten this curve. And if everyone becomes delinquent in rent this month and everybody is evicted at the same time and everybody gets sick at the same time and everybody goes to the hospital at the same time, the curve is not flattened. And the idea is to defer some portion of the rent over time and allow people to repay it so that the curve is flattened a little bit. And if people do lose their tenancies, it's not all at the same time. And also, they have, hopefully, an opportunity to recapture the revenue they need to pay any rent they were not able to pay because they were home for any one of the reasons that are in the ordinance. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have to wait 37 seconds? Okay. Okay, I acknowledge Councilmember Aurelio.
Thank you, Mayor. My question was to the lawyer. Can we add to this ordinance no increase in rent? This is for residential and commercial?
This is residential and commercial, as proposed.
Yeah, but no increase in rents, besides evictions, no increase in rents?
Doesn't provide for increases or decreases in rent.
I suspect it could be amended, though, to include.
It could be amended, I suppose. I think typically you're going to have a requirement that they be notified 30 or 60 days ahead of time. So that may, it may not be huge. I haven't researched that, but you're correct, Mayor. You can amend this and say, for example, no increases in rent until the emergency is, whatever you decide.
Okay. More questions, Aurelio?
That's all the questions I have.
Okay, then Councilmember Felipe?
I was just asking... Yeah, the audio went out when Alan was describing the options that we have. And I was asking if he can go over the options before us this morning.
Oh, the options of what you can do today? I think that's what he asked, isn't it? You can make a motion, someone can make a motion, as you typically do in your council meetings, to adopt the staff version, debate that, pass it perhaps, and then the ordinance is in effect as it is. That's one option. Another option is somebody can make a motion to amend it. They, for example, they could say, what I do, amend the motion, amend the ordinance to include no rent increases during the same period. And we could do that. And then if that amendment is approved, then it goes back to the main motion, the main motion passes, and that's what it will be. The motion could fail, and if so, it's not adopted. The motion could be tabled by someone and it would then expire for today. Or you could maybe decide you don't have enough information or there's some other reason you want to have it heard in the future so you can make a motion to continue the ordinance hearing until sometime in the future.
Thank you. Felipe, is that adequate?
Felipe, did that answer your question?
Yes, somewhat, yeah.
Are there other council members that would like to ask clarifying or technical questions? Okay, I do have a couple of questions.
Can we get the audio back up on the... Can we get the audio back up on the screen, too?
Can I ask my questions? Yes, okay. The tenant has, it's being proposed that the tenant have six months to pay rent. Will there be a payment plan to pay current rent plus the missed rent? For example, if my rent is $2,000 per month and I missed three months' worth of rent because of unemployment, I owe after six months, well, I owe the current rent plus the rent that I missed, which would be $6,000. And so how am I expected to pay my $2,000 plus the $6,000 that I missed?
I can't predict how that might happen. Some of the ideas might be that work more, perhaps, have family members work more, typical situations. And I'm not saying I recommend this or that it's possible, but we don't have the ability, as a city, to tell the landlord that they cannot collect the rent. So what we're doing is we're trying to make it easier for the tenant to accommodate a repayment. And the six months, I mean, you could make it longer. Most cities in the state are doing six months. And remember, we would, you know, maybe that they don't owe the whole $2,000 because the ordinance only provides for deferral of that portion of the rent they cannot pay, not the entire rent.
Mayor, if I could just add a city attorney's comments, specifically to your question of could they agree to a payment plan? The short answer to that is yes. However, the way the ordinance is proposed today, that payment plan would still have to ensure that any deferred rent is paid within that six-month period. Because this is not an abatement of rent, it's just a deferral. And I think in many cases, there would be an expectation that the tenant is still paying even perhaps partial rent. It may not be their entire monthly rent. They may just not be able to pay the entire amount, just as another example. And so the ordinance sets up a framework that would allow the tenant and the landlord to work through that and come to an agreement as to how to ensure that they're making good on all of their, on all of their rent responsibilities within that six-month timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
And just to further that, the landlord and the tenant could agree, despite the ordinance, that they want to allow the tenant nine months. They could agree to that. We're not superimposing our rules on the landlord and tenant relationship in that regard. If they want to say, you know, this has been really tough on all of us, I can handle it. Let's make it nine months, or let's make it a year, or let's make it seven months. They can do that.
Wonderful. So the six months is the minimum?
Six months is the maximum. They're supposed to repay within six months from when you terminate your emergency. So if you terminate the emergency on May 1st, let's say, let's make it easy, let's say July 1st. So what's that, November they would have to pay back all, unless they agree otherwise.
November, that's not...
Whatever this...
It's six months.
Six, December 1st, whatever the six-month period is.
Okay. My second question is, this will protect our renters, both residential and commercial, should we choose. But what about the homeowners and the landlords? They too might experience some economic difficulties during this mine, and I think about foreclosure. What needs to be done to protect them, the homeowners and the landlords?
Well, the President, I think it was last night, indicated that he's going to direct, I think it's FHA, to, a little unclear what he's doing, this stuff is happening so quickly. But he's directing some, I think it's basically, it's a deferral. I'm not sure whether it's deferral of foreclosure or deferral of mortgage payments. But cities really have a limited role, as we experienced in 2008, was it? And superimposing themselves over the relationship between a lender and a bank, sometimes federal banks, which we have no jurisdiction over, they have the supremacy clause. So it really doesn't address the mortgage issue.
Mayor, if I may add to that, I'm sorry for the interruption. To the city attorney's point, there are also executive orders being issued daily. And we have been taking action on those executive orders as the opportunities come forward, because the situation has been moving so rapidly. We anticipate that there will be additional stimulus packages, both at the state and federal level. As the city attorney mentioned, there was a discussion yesterday from the President providing relief to homeowners. There was also a stimulus bill that was introduced by McConnell that would set forth a trillion dollars of aid packages. Some of that directed towards businesses, business owners, and banks as well. So this is going to continue to evolve quickly. We are staying on top of it. And as opportunities come forward that we think the council should take action on, we will continue to bring those forward to you as well.
So that means that with this federal government, and I don't know if it was an executive order, just a recommendation or whatever, once that is official, we, as a city, then can come and develop a policy around that?
Potentially. And I would also just add that we have been in constant communication with our local state representatives. In fact, we have a call later today with Assemblymember Rivas based on concerns we have received from landlords and business owners as well about what additional financial relief they may see in the near future. Some of those may be executive orders that are applied immediately and would provide relief or stimulus package. Some of those may provide opportunities for the council to enact local policy to implement. So it just depends on how the executive orders come through. When appropriate, though, and we think that the council should take action on items, we will continue to bring those policies forward for your consideration.
Very, very good. Because we need to keep in mind that when we protect our residents, we're not only wanting to, the renters, but also the homeowners and the landlords also. So thank you very much for that. It appears that Councilmember Trina, you have a question? Okay, why don't you do that?
Councilmember Gomez would like to ask, can we include a copy of application and resources for tenants to apply for social service agencies so that we can document, that we can have documentation for the resources our community needs to stop the gap? That's one question. She also is asking if a tenant fails to catch up, will we not impose utility costs to property owner in the event that the tenant doesn't pay utilities?
There's, I think, three parts to this. Utility, what happens at the end? And will we provide information about ways to obtain funds to repay rent?
But I might take a crack at the first part of that question. There are a number of resources that continue to be deployed, both at state and federal level, that provide assistance to tenants and renters as well, as well as those that may find themselves unemployed during this crisis. And we have a number of community organizations that are providing those services, ranging from the Community Action Board, the Housing Authority, Watsonville Law Center, we have a representative here today, as well as a number of temporary unemployment assistance benefits that are also being included in some of the executive orders here in California and coming from the stimulus package we're expecting out of Washington. So on that front, absolutely. I think part of this effort is to make sure that our community members are connected with those resources. And when there's opportunities, for example, to supplement their income, if they find that they are, that their hours are being reduced at work or potentially being laid off from their current employer, for there to be some financial resources that come, that could also be contributed towards, of course, their rent payments. And we want to ensure that our residents are able to connect with those services. And we're already starting those conversations with a number of the organizations that we're fortunate to have here in the area. When it comes to utility billing, we have already implemented some administrative changes to provide some interim relief. That includes waiving late fees on utility bills. At this point in time, and we have also put a freeze on utility shut-offs, recognizing the significant health interest, then ensuring that utilities remain operational for our residents during this time. Our current practice is that if there is unpaid utility bills for a rental household, that ultimately, those costs are borne by the property owner at some point in time. And so that is, that is our current approach. There have, there has not been any recommendations to change that at this point.
Did that answer all the questions?
I will continue. Okay. Are there any other council members that would like to ask clarifying or technical questions of the city attorney or the city manager?
Member Kaufman-Gomez would like to know, just want to make sure that we show documentation so that we can show the impact for state resources.
So the ordinance does, as it's currently proposed, have some requirements for showing financial hardship. The city attorney did take a broader approach than many of these ordinances that other communities have put in place that have much more explicit requirements around specific types of documentation that would need to be provided. The approach here is a bit broader in allowing landlords and tenants to use a variety of ways to demonstrate that financial need without trying to avoid creating too much of a hardship by an overly burdensome documentation process, but also still requiring that there's something measurable that can be provided by the tenant to the landlord to show hardship.
Do the city council members have any further questions? I have one more. Our Executive Director, Salud para la Gente, mentioned in terms of barriers that could occur in terms of our ordinance. And I'm thinking, for example, we have had studies here in Santa Cruz County, in particular, to Watsonville, where many of our residents do not have bank accounts. So they couldn't show a bank statement. We have many farm workers that I know are paid under the table. And so there are no checks to show. And so in terms of our requirement for documentation, how do we address this issue?
The requirement, as written, says, just says, "verifiable documentation", and this is any financial, any information at all. And so the council, if it is going to require some demonstration, any financial information would be anything that might exist. And I can't, I understand the issue with people getting paycheck advances and all this sort of thing. But unless you eliminate that requirement, I don't know how you can predict how somebody could prove up their cash-based lifestyle.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further questions from our city council members, then this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come up and address the council? Please come on up. Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, first of all, I want to agree with Councilmember Aurelio Gonzalez. I think there should be a renting, a rent freeze for commercial and residential properties that qualify for this program through the end of the year. Through the end of the year, though, through nine months. And I think the whole program should be extended in the end of the year. Because this is, let's face it, this is a lost year, folks, financially for this community and for the nation, probably for much of the world. And yeah, it is going to require government bailouts, big time. Whatever party you belong to or your political philosophy, if we don't have bailouts, this is not going to be, we're not, you're not going to want to live here in 2021. It's just that simple. And I would also add, we need to remember that California has one out of every four homeless people. The thought of adding more homeless people, evictions and foreclosures, all we need to do is look at San Francisco, they have 14,000 people on the street. And we're talking about weather, the weather report, long-term? More rain and cold temperatures. Right, we're going to put them out on the street? I don't think so. That is, that is beyond idiotic. So yes, I, I agree with Aurelio, but I think it should be extended to nine months. And God help us all.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Are there anybody else in the audience that would like to come and speak to the council?
Just two more questions. One of them, I didn't catch your answer regarding with, your question to the lawyer about those six months and how, if, how they were able to manage payments or something like that. Because the answer that he gave, honestly, to be honest, my personal opinion, didn't make sense just to work, work longer or work harder to pay that money. I don't think that's an actual solution to this issue, you know? So if it was, it'd be really good to state that there's, I'm not a homeowner, you know, but I'm concerned about the ones who are and the ones who are paying rent, that there is going to be able to, you know, work something out with payments or at least for the months that, you know, this is issued for. I think it's really important because it's going to be hard to catch up for everybody, not just California. And then the other one was, oh, just stating once again regarding this, all this situation, that, like you said, the people who are undocumented and all this pain under the table, it's really important to let everybody know that this has nothing to do with immigration status or anything like that. Because I know a lot of people, I worked lots of years in agriculture, and a lot of them, they hide their money under bed, stuff like that, because they are scared even to go and, you know, sue someone or anything, you know? They're scared to go to the law. So I think it's really important, regardless of what you guys answered today, that you guys state that it has nothing to do with immigration and nobody should be scared to come up with and receive this kind of help. And my name is Angel.
Thank you, Angel, for your comments.
Mayor, we have a phone call.
Okay, we have somebody else in the audience that would like to speak.
And at the risk of repeating some of what I said earlier, I, this is Dory from Salud para la Gente. I just, I want to say again and stress again how the only effective means that we have to reduce and prevent the spread of COVID-19 or coronavirus is for people to follow the shelter-in-place order, which means people must stay in their home. And I realize that there is a tremendous amount of pressure and risk to businesses across the board, to education with the closures, healthcare, we are, you know, we are not removed from this risk as well, to landlords and, and to homeowners and to renters. What, what I think we have an opportunity to do today is to make sure that the, the decision that gets made is made with a public, with a public health lens, and really primarily only that lens. And I hear the council wanting to balance all of those concerns and interests. But the state and the county and now the city needs to put public health first because none of those other interests will be relevant if we do not control and contain this virus. And so I'll urge again to make sure that this ordinance, which is a wonderful way to make sure people can follow the order and stay in their homes and prevent the spread, that there are not barriers to being able to do that. It's Salud para la Gente. We face this every day. We serve the entire community, many of whom meet the kinds of criteria or descriptions that have been mentioned. People who do not receive paychecks are paid in cash. And we also have, you know, we provide services, we are reimbursed through insurance, and we have a sliding fee scale for people who are low income. We are every single day asking people to tell us what their income is and to demonstrate their, their documentation for that. And when they don't have it, we accept from them their word and their written statement of their income because we know how important it is for people to access healthcare. That's every day for us. This now becomes everybody's requirement. We need to allow people to tell us what their income is and document it in their own, with their own signature or their own, well, signature, in order to be able to be eligible for this. That, thank you.
Thank you for that. I think we have a phone call.
Please tell me if you can.
Yes, you're on. Please give us your name.
All right.
Please go ahead and give us your name. You're on.
Oh. Hi, this is Clark Kodaga. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, boy, I don't know what to say except for we're in shock. We had no idea about this meeting. We were not notified. I luckily heard about it just a few minutes ago. All I can say is that I, I would say to everybody making a decision or considering a decision today, that there's, a rash decision could have enormous effects on our economy when we're trying to work through this crisis. My, my strong idea is that you do not vote on this today. I don't have enough time for, to, to express how many implications this will have. The expectation that landlords or people of that nature have deep pockets or endless reserves to shoulder this is just unbearable. So if you do pass this, it'll actually bankrupt, could bankrupt many local property owners, and there will be no businesses or, or homes for people to be in to operate. So take your time, take a breath. I appreciate the fact that the city's being proactive. We were not consulted. I'm sure that most of the community was not consulted. A good landlord like us, I can only speak to us, we're already in contact with our tenants, we're working with our, with our tenants. We do that when these crises are not going on, and we have. We've, we've gotten through the, the previous crash, we're finally turning things around. We're doing a lot of good things for Watsonville. We care about Watsonville, we love our tenants, we love Watsonville, we appreciate all the people in power. We really implore you not to make a rash decision. I don't think it's, there's no reason to make a hasty decision when you could do this in a couple of weeks or a month or so and really think about the ramifications of what you're talking about. They're much deeper than is being expressed here. And again, I don't have enough time to really explain that to everybody, but realize, you know, you'll bankrupt companies, they'll lose employees, they won't be able to pay their rent. I mean, there's, there's so many things. And we don't know what the federal government's going to do, you know, or the state. We don't know that any, there's going to be any trickle down of money for the landlords to help offset what you're talking about. We still have mortgage payments, we have property taxes, we have employees, we have maintenance, these security, these things do not stop. I just implore you to take a deep breath, know that, I may, I may just be one speaking, but I think I speak for a lot of people. And in order for us to protect our community and do what we are already doing proactively to help our tenants, to help the community, to help the police department, to help the fire department, seniors, we're not able to do that with what you're talking about enacting. So please do not act today, defer. And I think you really need to get some, some community input before you make.
Thank you, Clark. We really appreciate your comments, but your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it appears that we do have another community member that would like to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Henry Martin. I'm the Director of the Watsonville Law Center. The Watsonville Law Center is a nonprofit legal aid organization. We have been serving this community with issues, including housing issues, eviction, eviction prevention, and in fact, we also serve low-income homeowners. We teach first-time homebuyer classes, and we were an anchor agency in partnership with the city of Watsonville during the foreclosure crisis, protecting homeownership and the rights of low and moderate income landlords in this community. My attorneys and my partners at the law center have been protecting people in Santa Cruz County Superior Court before that court was in this building. Yes, I will get a little bit closer to the mic and talk a little bit louder. I, I know, I respect that there's very little time to discuss this right now, so I'm going to assume that you've seen the written comments that I submitted to the council, and I've suggested three important amendments. One is deletion of radical amendment of the requirement for documentation. I heard the questions that you asked and... This might help if we put these, the phone and the, the microphone closer together. As an attorney who would need to be representing people in this courthouse, what I need is for the text of your ordinance to say what you mean. And if what you want is for the documentation to be very loose, to not filter people out, and for many people to be included in this, you have to say that. If you include the present language of verifiable documentation, that will exclude many, many low-income households, it will exclude people disproportionately based on protected characteristics. We know from national studies and from regional studies done by, for example, Santa Cruz Community Ventures, that low-income households in this community are disproportionately unbanked and underbanked. And please reference my written comments for what that means. Those are Latino households, Spanish-speaking households, households with a head of households born in another country. Those are women head of households, those are households with a disabled person. That is who will be excluded if you include that restrictive language. If it is your intent to include mobile home occupants, mobile home park residents, please say that. Do not assume that your language would be interpreted by a judge to mean that. If you don't say it, that means we actually have to go to an eviction hearing before that determination is made. The same thing with verifiable documentation.
Please continue.
How would your tenant know whether, how would the resident of the city of Watsonville know that they are protected by this? If you have a filter, something like verifiable documentation, and there's a dispute over that, they will have to go to their unlawful detainer, their eviction hearing, find out that day whether they are protected or not, and then they would have less than a week to get out of their house. The last element here is most homeowner protection laws in California have anti-retaliation protection. I agree with the caller, most homo, most homeowners, most landlords in the city of Watsonville are just like the other residents of the city of Watsonville, they are fundamentally decent people. That is not who we are talking about. We are talking about the landlords who are willing to evict someone in the middle of a public health crisis. People who are evicted, we were, you are at a disadvantage here because I know the expertise of your staff and the members of the city council and you yourself, Madam Mayor. You already know everything that I'm saying. You know we were in a housing crisis before COVID-19. You know that a family evicted within the next 30 days cannot find housing. They will be using city resources, using county resources, they will be in a homeless shelter, or they will be crowded in with some other vulnerable family unable to follow the basic public health standards that we have now, just 18 hours ago, imposed on the entire state of California. I understand that you are using template language from other cities. That language is days old, and that is old in this crisis. Days ago was a long, long time ago. Please try to remember where you were on Tuesday morning. I can barely remember. California has placed 40 million people under a shelter-in-place. This is a time for urgency. The urgency, I agree with the caller, this, this is not an excuse to act rashly, but it is an opportunity to be brave. And if you do not protect everyone, this will not work. I just, I want to ask you why you are trying to apply means testing to this. It is not a public benefits program. It is a public health program, and you need 100% compliance. Also, I believe there will be very serious legal problems for government agencies that place people out on the streets if there are not enough beds and shelters for those I, I think I, I think I've used up my time. I just want to recap and say, please say what you mean in the text, because when someone calls us later for help, that, that, that's what I have to protect our, our families and neighbors. If it is your intent to protect everyone, say that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any emails? Okay. Okay, so we have some emails that will be read to us now. I have a comment from Jenny Beach Olson. Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am Jenny Beach Olson, and I live and work in Watsonville. I would like to offer my sincerest gratitude to our city staff for their rapid response in order to keep all members of our community safe in this unprecedented time. Specifically, I commend the city manager's office, police department, and fire departments for their effort, for their outreach and education efforts, to share accurate, reliable information with our community on social media. I would also like to thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers, for your acknowledgement of the severity of the impact that this crisis has on our city, and for your swift action today to aid our residents and businesses. Based on the report and the additional documents included in the agenda, there is a widespread community support for eviction protections for resident, residential properties, and also, and I also support these protections for the people who reside here. Furthermore, I ask that you enact eviction protections for commercial properties as well. We will only be able to maintain our vibrant local economy by supporting our business owners. And this new coronavirus reality presents long-term sustained challenges to their viability. Local businesses, local business owners should be able to provide reasonable circumstances related to the impact of COVID-19 in order to qualify for eviction protection. For example, the payment, please do not make the process confusing or overly burdensome. Our business owners are also our neighbors, and we, and are now depending on you in this time of crisis. In closing, I would like to remind you that most of our favorite places are accepting online and phone orders for curbside pickup and even delivery. Your local pizza shop, brewery, skate shop, taqueria, sushi place, coffee shop, to name a few, need your business now more than ever. Thank you.
Need to add Noel to the call again?
Okay. Give me a moment, please. Okay. What is occurring is we need to add one of our council members back on.
Yes, please. Okay, I'm going to merge you in. Okay, so now everyone's back again.
Tamara, how many emails will you be reading?
One, two, three, four, five more.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, we have a phone call, so why don't we do the phone call first and then we'll go back to the emails? Go ahead.
Hi, this is Jagi Tutt from Westlake Avenue in Watsonville. And I just wanted to say quickly that I really think the council should take into effect of what will happen to landowners until the federal government really swerves of how they can help us, the landlord. If we're not able to make our mortgage payments and there's no specific plan in place from the federal government to help the landlords, we, I will lose my business, I'll lose everything. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tamara, go ahead. I have a comment from Marion Madrid. Hello, I have planned to move to Salem, Oregon on March 28th. My housing paperwork has been transferred and receiving Oregon Housing Authority. My grandson, my grandson and son-in-law will drive me from Oregon to Watsonville, pick me up, drive me and drive me back. Pick me up, drive me, and drive me back. Will there be a problem for this move? I have no choice. This date has been set since January. I am 72. I need caregiving, of which my daughter will provide for me, but I will be moving in with her. I appreciate what the city is doing to protect us all.
Thank you.
I'm trying to find the next one. One more. Good morning, my name is Nive Hansen. First of all, I wish to say, I wish you all safety and health during this pandemic. Thank you all for what you're doing during this quickly changing environment and holding this emergency meeting. There are definitely unprecedented times for all of us. We are all trying to figure out what our temporary new normal looks like and how we're going to exist. As you know, COVID-19 is affecting everyone, not just some of us. Governor Newsom's executive order in N2820 seems to only address a specific segment of our society and ignoring a very important segment being the landlords and that are now left to carry the load for many. We too are going to be greatly affected by these unprecedented times. We rely on our tenants' rent payments to make our loan payments on properties that renters both residentially and commercially occupy. Why are we not part of this executive order and why we not matter? This executive order only addresses 50% of the people and the enemy as we are always portraying. We are American citizens doing our part, paying taxes, investing in our communities. This country was founded on individual property rights. President Washington understood the importance of private property and its unique place in American society. This attempt to impose illegal restrictions on private citizens may bode well political, although this is not a time for politics and not in alignment with our founding fathers. Again, where is the assistance to the other half of the conversation? Thank you for your time and understanding, Nive Hansen.
Thank you, Niva.
I believe those are all the emails that are relevant on this topic, ma'am. Is there one? If you have it, would you mind reading it? I don't see it. This email is from Bill Hansen. Madam Mayor, City Council members, I hope all of you are doing well given the urgency, given the unprecedented events we are amidst at the moment. I hope all of you are doing well and you are keeping yourselves and your families safe. The proposed uncodified urgency ordinance appears to be attempting to assist tenants both commercial and residential. During this global pandemic, I applaud the efforts of the city council and their efforts to protect the citizens of our beautiful city of Watsonville. I truly believe assistance via in-place programs should be promoted to assist our collective citizens. I urge the local nonprofit agencies to assist with any and all potential economic hardships tenants, both commercial and residential, may be facing. Commercial tenants facing reduced retail sales and/or loss of their workforce and residential tenants facing unemployment will further stress our economy. I believe the city council should address the situation from a holistic approach. Assisting residential tenants with their economic hardship should be immediately addressed. State and local government housing assistance could appear to be the most prudent way to quickly assess with the economic... Sorry, let me... Let me answer this call. Hello, can you hold for a second?
Yeah.
Housing assistance could appear to be the most prudent way to quickly assess with economic hardship some of our community members will be facing. Federal and state assistance with the local housing authority could provide a backstop for this current dilemma. Deferring the residential rental payment will create an undue hardship for the very individuals this uncodified urgency ordinance is attempting to assist. The financial burden of up to six months of back rent will create a lasting financial obligation some will not be able to overcome. The individual's credit and future ability to rent will be affected in both the short and long term. Commercial tenants should be encouraged to communicate directly with their respective landlords and develop a plan specific to their individual needs. I'm certain commercial tenants and landlords will be able to mutually agree on a specific plan to meet their individual needs. The majority of residential and commercial property owners rely heavily upon the monthly rental payments to satisfy their respective financial obligations. Interrupting the rental streams has a domino effect on our local and regional economies. Should the rental stream be interrupted to the commercial and residential property owners, the payments to banks, city utilities, county property taxes, insurance, landscapers, maintenance, security, PG&E, and employees servicing the properties will cease. The default to the various vendors will initiate credit deterioration and contractual defaults. These components of the conversation needs to be addressed simultaneously. The proposed uncodified urgency ordinance addresses one side of the equation and does not address the equally important other half. I strongly urge the city council to address this unprecedented event from both sides of the conversation to avoid further exaggerating an unprecedented event. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Bill. Yes, go ahead. Okay, you're on.
Hello?
Yes, hello. Please state your name.
My name is Glenn Kramer. I'm a real estate broker and the owner of Works from Kramer Real Estate in Watsonville. And it's over 500,000 square feet of commercial property in and around Watsonville. And we have over 250 tenants that we are dealing with. I'm a little disappointed that this meeting is being held when we're being told not to be open and have no way of knowing this meeting is being held. I'm very concerned that you're taking an action or considering taking an action very early in this situation without knowing how bad it's going to be. Of course, commercial property owners realize that some tenants are going to suffer from this immensely, and they will take that into consideration. That's what we do. We work with our tenants. If you talk to any of our tenants, I think you'll find that we, and most other property management companies, care deeply about tenants and their economic and emotional well-being. And I would be very concerned if you were to take them into action where they're... From what I understand, you're postponing rent payments for six months. That hurts the property owner immensely. Who's going to pay the mortgages on those properties? Who's going to pay for the maintenance on those properties? Property owner with no income coming in, that's a hardship. And I think you might be opening the city up to a lawsuit if you were to do something like this. And I would urge much caution. And I would also urge that you postpone any decision until, you know, a couple of weeks from now, when we know how bad this is going to be. But what you're considering doing right now is an overreaction, I believe. Consequences for the city would probably be very dire.
Thank you, Glenn. So are there any other public comments?
No more emails.
Is there something going on that the city council is voting to defer rent for nine months?
They're not emailing to the right email. They need to email council@citycouncil. Okay, please state your name.
Kathy Oliver.
Go ahead.
Hi there, I'm Kathy Oliver, and I'm a broker for property manager, Kathy Oliver Property Management. And I heard that there's something going on where you're wanting to vote to defer rent for nine months for tenants.
Yes. Excuse me, can you turn off some or go to a quiet place?
Well, you know what? I'm in a grocery store. I got a phone call about this, so I called immediately. So let me see if I can go outside so I don't have the music above my head. Is this a little better?
No.
Okay, hold on.
Can you call back, please?
This way, is this better?
Yes. Go ahead. You're on.
So I heard that there's something going on where the city wants to vote to defer rents for nine months. Is this true?
The council is considering an emergency ordinance for a moratorium.
For a moratorium, and what specifically does that mean?
You're on an open mic, and I cannot be answering questions.
Okay, so let me just state my mind then because I went through the Watsonville canaries when they closed, and there were many, many people that were without a job. And the landlords worked with every one of those people to make sure that they wouldn't lose their places. For instance, our office has already enacted a policy that there will be no late fees and that the tenants will be able to make payments. The government, the national government, is going to be giving money to every citizen on April 6th. And if that goes through, then these tenants will have money to pay their rent and for the next couple of months. And there's many tenants that have not lost their job. And if you do this where the landlords cannot charge rent, it'll devastate the community. People will lose their houses because they won't be able to pay their mortgages. Do you really want to do that to the citizens of Watsonville?
Is that all your comments?
Well, I can't hear anybody, so I don't know if anybody is asking me any questions or anything.
Okay, okay, thank you for calling.
Thank you.
Are there any more emails?
Hello?
It sounds like there's another phone call.
Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, you're on.
I'm on?
Yes.
Hello, this is Chris Codica calling.
Yes, go ahead.
And I'm speaking to the council right now?
Yes.
You think nobody, we were not notified of this. Nobody was. We didn't know this was happening. We think this is a knee-jerk reaction. We believe in the city of Watsonville. We love the city of Watsonville. We're not here. You're pitting the landlords against the business owners and the tenants, and we don't think that's right. The federal government and the state government are working right now to sort this out. It's too early to do this. It needs to be deferred. We've worked very hard, as have many other property owners, property management companies, and landlords to improve the city of Watsonville. We continue to work on that. We always work with our tenants. We want Watsonville to have strong businesses. We are getting strong businesses in town, and this will just devastate everything. The landlords need to be able to work with their tenants. And, you know, people are compassionate, people understand. And it just, there's mortgage payments, there's property taxes. This is, you know, insurance has paid everything. And also, you know, you're going to kill the, you know, what's this going to do to all the grocery stores in town? And, you know, we have a new grocery store coming in town. Staff alike, we've been working diligently on. They're great people. They're coming to Watsonville. And this is not, you know, who knows what's going to happen with them if something like this passed. So we implore you to just slow down. You know, we can't come to your meeting because of the stay-at-home thing. We just heard about this, and we don't think that there's a good, you know, a full discussion happening on this. And I don't see how the city is going to control this when the landlords are working with their tenants. We're trying to figure out everything right now with our tenants. We're trying to keep the essential businesses open for our community. And everybody is working together. And we feel that by doing this action, you're not working together with the community. And we believe in the city of Watsonville. We've been here, you know, our whole lives, investing and helping. And I'm just saying that this action cannot happen the way it is right now. And you should trust the community to work this out amongst ourselves instead of pitting the city council and everybody against each other. It's because, you know, so we're here, we're here to help. We will do anything we can. But you need to defer this, and it's very important for everybody to take a breath.
Thank you, Chris, for your comments. Your time is up.
Be in the community.
Thank you.
And not think that we need to have a meeting and just make some knee-jerk decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it appears that there are no more public comments, so I will bring this back to the council for... No, there's still another comment coming in.
Yes, my name is Dave Molinari, and I'm a small business owner in the city of Watsonville. And the reality is, we have been mandated to close as a small business. We have no money. Therefore, whether the landlords want their rent or not, they're not going to get their rent. We don't have any money. That's where it starts. This emergency funding to go further into debt is not a solution. We cannot go further into debt as a small business. We're already in debt. We feel strongly, and I'm not alone in this, many small business owners in the city of Watsonville feel strongly that we need a break. Business will never be the same in the city of Watsonville, not for a very long time. And although I understand, at the end of the day, the landlords will make 100% of lost rent, us business owners are not in that same situation. We need to fight to rebuild our brand. The economy has taken a massive hit. Who's going to spend money at small businesses in Watsonville unless they're required to, perhaps for survival? Other small businesses in Watsonville are not in that same situation. And I request that, if possible, we consider, you consider, some leniency with small businesses. And, you know, the understanding here is that, yes, perhaps, and we hope that you do defer rent. We strongly, strongly hope that that occurs. But at the end of the day, the landlords will make 100% of their lost rent, and us business owners may go bankrupt in the meantime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Seeing no more public comment, I bring it back to the city council, and I will entertain a motion regarding the uncodified urgency ordinance. Oh, there's another phone call coming in.
Go ahead, you're on.
All right, my name is Kelly Davis. I am a landlord, I do manage and own several units, and I just got word that you're proposing to halt rent for six months, and I'm strongly opposing this. This would actually put me into a financial crisis myself. Is this, is this true, what I'm hearing, that you're trying to abate the rent for six months? For commercial and residential?
You are on giving public comment, we're not answering questions.
I see, okay. Well, this is what I've heard, that you're trying to abate rent for six months for commercial and residential landlords, for tenants to pay their rent. And this would be financially crushing to all those landlords who own property. It's not that we're unwilling to abate some rent, but six months would absolutely financially kill us. So I urge you, am I voting no on this? I urge you to not pass this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, now it seems that we have no further public comments, so I bring it back to the city council, and I will entertain a motion regarding the uncodified urgency ordinance. Do I hear a motion? Okay, Aurelio, could you make the motion publicly?
Line through that, that that's not included in it?
Wait, wait, wait. Aurelio, Aurelio, could you start again, because you were not heard at the very beginning, so could you start again? Okay, Aurelio, hold on to your motion, because we got another telephone call for public comment.
I thought you already had closed oral communication.
Well, we, because... Yeah, we will eventually close it, but we do have another call, so just hold on to your motion, okay? Okay, that phone call failed. So we'll go ahead and, okay, we're going to take, I'm being recommended by the city council to take a three-minute break. I'm not sure why, because I think we're having some more difficulties, so hold on. I will bring this meeting back to order. Hopefully, we have taken care of all the technical problems that we need to have. I want to say that public, the public hearing is over now, and I am now going back to the council members and ask if there's anybody, well, I will go to Aurelio, because Aurelio wanted to make a motion regarding the uncodified urgency ordinance. Aurelio, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend staff recommendations. Okay, I'd like to make a motion and amend the staff recommendation. I'd like to line out the verbiage verification of documents. I'd like to add that it will only be a 60-day moratorium, and then it'll be brought back to the council. And that there will be no rent increases during that time. This will include all, all any type of dwellings, motorhomes, anywhere that somebody is paying rent to live in. That's my motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by council member Aurelio, is there a second to that? I will second that. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Discussion on this motion, please? Is there any of the council members that would like to discuss this motion by Aurelio?
I'll say it again. I'd like to make an amendment to the staff recommendation that we line out the verbiage verification of documents, that we put on that states that it will be only a 60-day moratorium, and it will be brought back to council. There will be no increases during this time. And also, this would include mobile homes or any type of units that are where rent is being paid to dwell in.
That has been clarified now. Any discussion on this motion?
Use your mic, so you can listen. There's a lot of backfeets. That means a lot of people have their mics on when I'm talking.
May I recommend one of us actually stating the motion so that they all can hear clearly through their live stream?
Okay, I will repeat the motion, as I heard it. The motion is to amend staff recommendation to, one, strike out verifiable documentation; two, to make this a 60-day moratorium, and then it be brought back to the council after that; three, that there would be no rent increases during this time; and four, that mobile homes and any other dwelling where rent is paid be included. That is the motion. And it's been seconded by me. So now, it appears that Ari, council member Ari, would like to speak. Ari, you're on.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I feel this is such an important discussion, yet I don't feel like, in the way we are set up right now, we can have this discussion the way we're supposed to. So either we delay this meeting for another day, or we need to come down to the chamber and reconvene there in person. This is not working for me at all. And the other folks, they're even more confused. I'm listening to their comments. They can't hear. And this is way too an important conversation to do in this manner.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other council members that would like to speak? Did you hear my comment? Just say yes or no? I'm just asking, are there any other council members that would like to speak? Thank you, Trina. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Yes, this is Lowell.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we've been at this almost three hours here, and I feel like we've missed over half of the conversation. So I have to agree with the previous speakers. This is not working.
Thank you for your comments, Lowell. Are there any other council members that would like to speak? Hearing none, then we will vote on this motion. And should it fail, then we can have another motion. So I will take roll call.
I'm going to be taking roll on the motion that Aurelio made, so please vote on this motion. Parker? Parker? No! Gonzalez? Gonzalez? Estrada? 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 We're voting on Aurelio's motion.
Are you talking to me?
Yes, I'm talking to you.
Are we really taking a vote like this?
Aurelio made a motion. I'm asking council to vote on Aurelio's motion.
You know what? I might just leave this meeting, and so we won't have to have a roll, and we might have to do that. This is ridiculous. And I suggest others do the same.
Francisco, do you vote on this motion?
I support the motion, but this is not the way I wanted to take my vote.
Okay, well, just vote yes or no.
Council, mayor and council, if I may. We hear the frustration, your interest of wanting to continue this item to a date certain. There's a motion on the floor that we need to get through before the council can take action on continuing this discussion. It sounds like that is the interest... Mayor and council? We hear you. This process is not working. We understand that many of you were not able to hear many of the comments made. We understand the direction you're wanting to go. You have the option of making a motion to adjourn the meeting, and we could bring this item back and take a second go at it.
I second that motion.
Do we need a date?
Do we need a date on that?
A date and time, to adjourn.
Okay. So we're like actually tabling, tabling it?
Adjourning it.
We're going to adjourn? But it sounds like this is a motion to table to another time.
Those would be three different options. Table would mean you put it back in the table, you end the meeting, and staff and the mayor, agenda review, whatever, would bring it back at some time in the future. Continuing to a date certain would be telling the council, telling staff when you want to hear it again. And adjourning is taking this existing hearing with the public input and everything else, and coming back, I think it's within 72 hours. I can't remember what the charter says.